Okay, good evening. It is 6:05 on Thursday, February 9th, and I would like to call this information study session of the Lansing School District Board of Education to order and ask that the clerk please call the rule.
Dr. Body? Dr. Kavanaugh? Ms. Lilge? Mr. Lopez? Ms. Moore? Mr. Richardson? Dr. Rodriguez? Ms. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Willis?
Present. And Dr. Body, I know is present and will be joining us shortly. And I was aware that Dr. Kavanaugh and Dr. Rodriguez would not be joining us this evening. So why don't we jump right into our order this week? So we have a couple items with our cancellation of our regular meeting last week that the board, we do want us to discuss so that we can act and put these motions in place for our meeting next week. So the first item on the agenda is the first reading. We'll first have to check, see if there's public comment, any public comment? Seeing none. And then next is the first reading of the use of electronic devices for students and staff during testing. Dr. Rodriguez is not here, but I believe I can summarize the importance of this policy is really around the need for us to have guidelines put in place for how electronic devices, namely cell phones and any communication devices, have to be managed during state mandatory testing. So we really need this in place so that we can enforce and demonstrate that we have policies around securing against any impropriety during testing. So that's what we have before us today. Dr. Rodriguez did apologize that it's not in our typical Niola format. It was just a timing issue. So when it does go into our policy manual, it'll be formatted correctly. But this is the language that we needed to have before us. So what we have on the agenda is an opportunity for acceptance of a first reading. May I have a motion? So we have a motion that the board considered the attached use of electronic devices for student and staff during testing for first reading. May I have a second? A second. It's been moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Moore. Any questions or comments? Absolutely. Ms. Lopez?
This is for Superintendent. Will this policy be beneficial to you, I mean, to the staff, for the administration of the buildings that will give them the tools necessary?
Yeah, first of all, thank you so much for the question. You know, not only will this allow for much more clarity for any proctor, but it also will then bring us into accordance with the kind of generally accepted rules and regulations. You know, the MDE has been very helpful, Niola has been very helpful. The way that this is written, we think, really leaves nothing to chance. That it's very clear about what the expectations are for the proctors as well as for the students. I know that certainly Deputy Superintendent Sergio Keck worked on this with the board team around this policy. But I'm very happy with this because, as you can see, it's not insignificant. It is multiple pages long with quite a lot of very good specifics. So yes, thank you.
I do have a question as well, Superintendent. Would the proctors be aware for those children who have special requirements with this? Okay.
Yeah, and I'd like to comment on that. So thank you very much for bringing this up. One of the most important things about having this codification is it also then allows for the extra time or any special privileges that any student, be them special ed or not. So yes, thank you.
Great. Any additional questions or comments? All right. I do want to acknowledge the timing of the admittance of Dr. Body to the discussion, and I just want to afford him the opportunity to be aware of what we're about to do. I'm just about to call a vote, and I don't want you to not know what we're talking about. So we have on the table a motion to approve the first reading of the use of electronic devices for students and staff during testing policy. And just reiterating that the purpose of this policy is to make sure that there's no ambiguity and inability to enforce not having the use of any cell phones. I think I saw Kindles, any sort of communication device during testing. And that, just bringing up that there is also still clear guidance on what to do if a student has a reasonable accommodation for like a hearing device or things like that. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Great, motion passes 6-0. All right, next on the agenda this evening is our personnel report. I'm going to turn it over to our presenter, Mrs. Moore.
Thank you, Madam President. Included in your packet this evening is our personnel report, a report for approval. I would like to highlight, we have a retirement for an individual that served the district for 30 years. I would like to congratulate them and wish them best on their future endeavors. I also want to highlight something that I'm a little sad about. John McGraw is on our list. And John is our information manager, and he's been with the district for four years. He's the one, him and his team, they set all of this up, I believe. So John, thank you for your service as well, and I'm sure we'll miss you. Yeah, and Madam President, oh, for new hires. I can also highlight that we have nine new hire non-teachers. We have seven new hire teachers. And yeah, Madam President, I really don't have anything else to report at this time. So that concludes my personnel report.
Are there any? Oh, may I have a motion to approve the press?
Personnel, I said.
I'm sorry, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the personnel report as presented? It's been moved by Dr. Body, supported by Ms. Williams. Now, are there any questions or comments on the motion? Thank you. Ms. Lilge?
Sometimes we see the category of tenure and like one or two names. And I just would like to know more about what that means.
I can answer a part, and then I'm happy to turn over to our COO. You know, when our wonderful teachers reach the time where they have enough years of service as well as have positive ratings, they are able to be granted tenure. You know, it's a great statute for them. It affords them more privileges, of course, but it's usually based on number of years of service as well as satisfactory ratings. But I'm getting the thumbs up from the COO that that is what she would say as well. And we really, what I appreciate is that we put this here because being granted tenure is something that shouldn't be taken lightly. You know, we should be really saying how great that is. And because once somebody's tenured, you know, it really gives them a lot more rights and privileges, and that's not to be taken, you know, as a joke. It's really quite good. So congratulations to David Bills, and we look forward to more people getting tenure throughout the year.
Certainly. Thank you for lifting that. Thank you for lifting that. I wanted to also share that, yes, thank you for lifting David Bill's name. And also, I did not share our retirees' name because I didn't know if that was acceptable or not. Is that okay? Wonderful. So Karen Mads from the program, she was a program manager over at Hill. So congratulations again on your retirement. And once again, Ben, thank you for lifting that we have that tenured person that's on our report this evening.
Thank you. Any other? Although I would like to make a friendly amendment that we do not accept that it's presented and accept it minus John McGraw's resignation. Technically, we don't have any say in that. So are there any other questions or comments? All right, all those, oh, sorry, Ms. Lopez?
Just the fact that we look at the resignations and some teachers, one year, two years resignation. There probably are many reasons why people resign or ask to resign, I suppose. But for those teachers that choose to leave, do we know, is it money in another district? Or is it because they miss family somewhere else? Or do we do an exit interview?
Yeah, we definitely do an exit interview. And, you know, you can see under the reason, sometimes none is given. Some, it's changing an employer. Sometimes it's retired or personal reasons. What we do as a district is we actually have a pretty intensive exit interview process. If they so choose to do it or not is a different story. Something that actually we've been working on as an HR department is trying to really codify the exit interview so we can actually search it and do things sadly over the last, and I'll defer to Christina here. But like, it was done in a PDF. It was hard to look at the data. It was hard to analyze. We're now bringing in new software that'll allow us to really look at that. You know, I don't want to conjecture what the reasons are. But, you know, the thing that I can see from the list, which is positive, is if you look at the years of service, almost, you know, many, many of them are within the first five years, and then there really isn't one from five to 15. That shows that certainly those that kind of start and stay seem to be staying. And then, of course, you have a retirement at 30 years. God bless anybody that stays anywhere for 30 years. But I think what you bring up is a really good point, which is when we do more presentations for human resources, we should be talking about the reasons why people are leaving. And one of the ISSs that's going to be coming forward this year is one on HR. And so I'll make sure to add that to that.
Yeah, I was looking at the reasons and change employer. That's probably one, I mean, are they changing because they're changing their work, you know, or they're moving to another district to pay some more?
Yeah.
And how does that, you know, line up with what we have? Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Any additional questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Great, motion passes 6-0. Now, I believe I am turning the floor over to the Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent.
I am. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to see all of you. It's nice to be here at our schools. You know, one of the great things about this board is that this decision to not just be at the central office but to travel throughout to get a sense so that our board can really see the facilities, both good and bad. I have to say, I am impressed with the new walls and the new ceiling and the new seats at the Dwight Rich Auditorium. It's quite nice. People should come visit. But I also really appreciate the idea that we're going into the community to do this, although I know quite a lot of people watch us on TV. So I'm going to turn it over to our wonderful Deputy Superintendent Jessica Benavides. I will be leaving my seat, if that is okay, so I can sit next to her. And we are going to be giving the joint presentation on the mid-year assessment. Everybody should have a handout, but we're, of course, going to be going over it, and you'll have a clever touch to watch. So just give me a second, and I will scoot over there.
Behind the curtain. All right, good evening, everyone. It is my privilege and pleasure to be here this evening to talk about something that our team especially is very passionate about, although it might not be a favorite of our students, which is assessments. As part of the 98B legislation, we do, one of the requirements is to present to the Board of Education our assessment progress throughout the school year. And so we are here this evening. I think it's just good practice. So I'm just glad to be here to share this information with all of you. All right. So outlined in front of you really is Public Act 48, and this started last school year. And this is actually the second time that I've been a part of presenting this information to you. So I'm excited to show you the progress that we've made over the last year. As you can see, the act is at the top, we had to identify our goal by the 15th of September for the 22-23 school year. And as a school district, we chose what is in that kind of teal bubble, which is our goal is set as 80% of our students will meet growth expectations by the end of the 22-23 school year. You might be asking yourself why we chose 80%. And the rationale there is really around our response to intervention triangle, or what we would call, we would expect that 80% of our students would be able to meet the target. And then we have about 20% that might need more intense interventions to meet that. So we thought this was a more realistic goal than the one that was presented previously, which was 95%. So of course, we're always going to shoot for 100, but we want to make sure that when we're submitting something especially to the MDE, that we make it a realistic goal for ourselves.
And just one clarification around that. You've heard us talk about response intervention. You've probably heard us talk about tier one, tier two, and tier three. So the generally accepted understanding of that is that 80% would be within a kind of a tier one model. Two, tier two would be about 15%, and tier three would be about 5%. So the idea here is that we really want to make sure that we are following that model but also holding ourselves accountable to really quite a difficult but a very important goal. And so again, you know, we're happy to talk about the model of tiered instruction and tiered support. But again, tier one typically is about 80%. Tier two is about 15, and tier three is five. And that's where we took this. I mean, I think you're getting to understand that a lot of the work we're trying to do throughout the district is based on research, based on best practice, and based on kind of the schemata that we've been using for the district.
All right, so without further ado, we'll jump in. Anytime we get a chance to celebrate the demographics of our district, I think we want to do that. So you might think, why is the slide on here? But I think it's important for everyone here, of course, the board will know this, but the public might not, and some of our staff, to see some updated numbers. So with a population of about 10,000 students, we have our breakdown of our demographics. And then we also have students that are English language learners and students with IEPs. Give you just a minute to look that over. All right. So as we spoke about, we chose a measurement of 80% of our students meeting growth. But we want to talk about really what is growth and what does that mean to us? So we do use two major assessments in the fall, winter, and spring of our school year. We use AIMS Web Plus for our kindergarten and first graders, and then we move to NWA for second through 12th graders. And the types of tests are outlined for you here. The AIMS Web Plus is really a screener for early literacy and early numeracy, again for kindergarten and first grade. And then we move into NWA for second through 12th grade, which is a normed adaptive assessment. And really, the NWA is a very powerful assessment because it is an indicator of M-step, and it is an excellent indicator. We've kind of analyzed our data over the last couple of years, and students that are proficient in NWEA tend to be within a 1% to 2% deviation of students that are also proficient on the M-step. So it's an excellent indicator for us to know where our students are, who we need to put some more time, energy, and intervention into, what we need to think about for tier one, and how our instruction is moving along. All right, there are really four types of growth that we're going to talk about today, and then one piece of data. So we will use the words proficient. So for educators out there, they know this word inside out and backward, but a score that denotes that a student is at or above grade level. So when we talk about a student that's proficient, if I'm a third grader, that means I am able to perform at the third grade benchmark, according to the state of Michigan. Then we have met growth, which means that I am a third grader that comes in, and of course, I'm just using third grade as an example, that comes in at a certain score in the fall, and then I am performing like all third graders average across the nation. So that's what met growth means. I do want to be really careful, though, that when we talk about met growth, that we don't confuse that with proficiency, because even if I've met adequate growth or growth as an average third grader, that does not mean that I'm proficient. It could mean I am, if I come in at grade level, okay? And then we have some growth. That means a student that took the assessment in the fall and their score increased by one to up to 50, 75 points, right? So it's just any growth. And then we have no growth, and those would be students that either scored the same exact score from fall to winter, or their score decreased from fall to winter. And then lastly, this is kind of an exciting addition. We now have been here for over a year, and so we have some comparative data to look at how we're performing from last winter to this winter.
And just to remember, you know, what Jessica had pointed out. So, you know, last year was the first time that we did this. It was under a very different instructional situation. We had a different way of organization at the district. Now, we have not only Jessica but a Department of Instruction, and we have really reconfigured the district to be focusing very much on what's happening in the classroom and hopefully, as you'll see, what that impact is. But again, you know, that really occurred starting in, I think it was March of last year. And so hopefully, we're starting to see the fruits. But I do want to temper expectations to just remember that last year was the model that before we kind of came in and made the changes, and that this year, starting with a new understanding, starting in March, and now this is our first kind of indication of growth or not growth, as you'll see.
All right, the first piece of data that we're going to look at is growth by grade level. So we are going to look at AIMS Web Plus and NWA from kindergarten through 12th grade. And on these first slides, these will be just our scores from this winter, and then later in the presentation, we'll get into comparative data. So I do want to point out one thing, which I think we all need to be proud of as a school district, which is that the 98B requirement for the state of Michigan requires that school districts report on growth only for kindergarten through eighth grade. So really, under the leadership of our superintendent, and honestly, and the transparency that we're committed to, to our community, to our educators, our families, and our board, we are reporting on all of our students from kindergarten through 12th grade, and not only on just growth, but on proficiency, some growth, and no growth. We want the full picture of our district to be out there because we think it's really important. So I just want to shed a little bit of light on that.
Thanks. I don't want to take any of this. It's very nice that Jessica said that, but I think it's all of us, certainly as an executive team and as a district. The only way we're going to move forward is that if we're honest, we actually tell everybody the whole story, and we share all of the different facets. It is true, we could just share K-8, and we could just talk about growth, but what's the point? If we're going to make decisions based on what's actually working for children or what's not working for children, the more that we kind of shed light on what's happening, K-12, as well as on the different types of proficiency, macro, some growth, et cetera, it empowers the board to help lead that vision of where we can get better. So I appreciate very much Jessica, her team, the entire ET, and really this district for being willing to start to open up and say, look, this is the reality so that we can move forward to put students first.
All right, so let's jump in. We have in front of you a proficiency summary for kindergarten through 12th grade. Again, a reminder that in kindergarten and first grade, we do use a different assessment, which is AIMS Web Plus. And then we move into NWEA, which is a much more rigorous, standard-aligned assessment for second through 12th grade. So in front of you, you have kindergarten. The teal color is in reading, and the kind of navy blue is in math. So we'll take you through, and you're going to notice how our scores compare to each other, right? So how are we performing in reading? How are we performing in math? You will kind of see a trend, especially from second grade through 12th grade. Overall, we tend to perform better in reading. And a lot of that is because the focus really has been around literacy, especially over the last, well, for a while now, but especially over the last several months. We are adopting a structured literacy approach, and with the instructional division and our wonderful ELA steering committee, we are really doing some great things in the area of reading. So I think you're seeing some of that indicator here. But also, this is a great reminder that we need to really amp up our strategies for math. The other thing that I do want to point out is the axi on the left-hand side is out of 100, and that's intentional because we don't want to make something look inflated or different depending on the side numbers that we use. So that gives you a true picture of what you're looking at.
What Jessica, because she's a much nicer person than I, is suggesting is that previous data that you might have seen in different folks adjusted axes to make things look inflated. We don't do that anymore. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that this is out of 100, that this is full and complete data. You know, it might not mean that we are the best district in the world, but it really is about trying to give you as much true data as possible. So again, you can see, and then you can see that line at 80, that's the district goal that we will hopefully meet by the end of the year. And we'll talk about how to read and analyze the data that you have in front of you.
All right, so in front of you, you have the K-12 met growth summary. So again, these are students that are making progress, like students of their own grade level across the nation. It's not a true indicator of proficiency, as you can see from the first slide to this one, but we are really proud that we are seeing many students already this time in the year meeting growth. If you take a look at, especially even in our kindergarten and first grade, we've already, we're very close to that 80% mark. But again, remember that the AIMS Web Plus is a screener, so it is not quite as rigorous as the NWEA. But we do feel it's the best tool for our kindergarten and first grader because they're a great indication of early literacy skills and early numeracy skills.
One interesting thing to note, if you remember the previous slide, our proficiency levels in ELA tend to be higher than our proficiency levels in math. But when you look at met growth, meaning are the kids moving forward at the rate that we think they should be, or the way the national norms are, our numbers tend to be relatively similar, which means that a lot of our students are coming in with lower abilities in math rather than literacy. So it's kind of interesting, if you notice how similar the growth numbers are between the grades, you know, 52, 53, and grade six, you know, 44, that they're much more similar, which really means that the teaching is moving the kids kind of at the same level. But when you look at proficiency, a lot of that is the level that they were coming into us at the different grades. So there's a lot of information here that we'll kind of analyze on the fly here. But of course, when we're done, you know, any questions that you have, we want to answer them.
All right, now we will move into some growth. So these, again, are students that took the fall assessment, and they moved forward in a positive way, right? So they increased from anywhere from one score, or excuse me, one point to many points, right? So this is not typically an indicator that as an instructional division that we're super interested in, because we are really interested in proficiency and meeting growth. But it's still a good data point to look at across the district, so. And then on the flip side of that, we have no growth. So of course, if you were to add some growth and no growth together, you'd end up with all of our students. I do want to point out a couple of just observations that we've made in talking with principals, too, that I think is important to share. One is that in the area of our secondary schools, you can see obviously that the graph is increasing in no growth as our kids move forward. One of the reasons for that, and having a high school daughter, I can probably say this pretty accurately, there isn't really anything tied to their NWEA scores. For example, their SAT scores are something that they're going to need, right? Either for scholarship, for college, and to move forward. So NWA really is something that students often will click through if they don't see the importance. And we know that NWA is a very important tool for educators to have to move our students forward, to know which standards are we doing well in our instruction, which ones do we need to change or modify. Which ones do we need to change or modify based on what our students are learning? So one of the things that we are looking into right now is how can we give the NWA a little bit more teeth and meaning to our high schoolers so that we get really accurate results?
Yeah, I mean, there's a reason why a lot of times the question is, you know, you only really need to present K eight data because once you get into the high schools, the NWA really is not tied to anything. It's not seen as meaningful. It doesn't lead towards college. And of course, with M step being, you know, up to eighth grade, the thing that a ninth or tenth or eleventh or twelfth grader are looking at is credits. Am I going to graduate, that kind of stuff, AP exams, whatever. But we are going to start a pretty deep conversation about how do we make NWA matter? Because it will allow teachers and students and families to understand the need and the support for those students. So you do see, and I am not trying to sugarcoat this. When I see this graph, it makes me very sad, somewhat sick because you're saying to yourself, hey, in the high schools, they're just, there's a bunch of kids that are not growing. But I do want to temper that by saying this exam doesn't mean anything to them. And so if you were a fourteen or seventeen-year-old kid and were told, sit here for three hours on a computer, it doesn't mean anything to you, there is a chance you might say, why should I care? So we're going to be working on that. But again, I don't want to say that this isn't real data. It is. But when you look at the younger grades, especially the K through eight, the exams themselves are given a little bit more weight by the schools and by the students.
So the no-growth data is really important to us because...
I'm sorry, it's okay. We'll take a question, please. Dr. Batty?
I mean, sure, if that's okay. Okay.
I just wanted to say that the no-growth data really is super important to us as an instructional division because this is where kind of the behind-the-scenes, we could have made this honestly a hundred and some slides, right? Because there's a million ways to look at this. We are not going to put you through all of that, but we're happy to share any information you'd like to know. But no-growth is really important because then what we will do is we take this data behind the scenes and our principals do this work right alongside their teacher leadership teams, their staff, because it's not just important to us at a district level. It's very important as a teacher that they, they want to know who's growing and who's not growing in their classrooms. So we try to make the process a little bit easier in that we will disaggregate the data so that we'll know by teacher, by student, who's growing, where, what's happening with our students for no-growth? Was it that they were like, oh, I, I don't, I don't really care about this test? And we have other things in the classroom we can look at to say, oh, they're actually growing in the right direction. It's a one-day test, right? It's not the be-all, end-all. And so that data is really important to us to make sure that schools and teachers are looking at that, to make sure that we're supporting our students and figuring out why the no-growth has occurred. All right, now we're going to get into some summary data. So this is comparative data. So you will see a kind of medium gray bar. That is winter scores from last winter. So that's twenty-twenty-two. And then the colorful score, the colorful bars on the right-hand side are, are these winters, this winter's scores. So if we look at the first bar, that's proficient, that kind of light blue. So you can see last year we were, we were at twelve-point-one-six percent. And this year at winter, we are at sixteen-point-four-four percent. So I know that the percentage, you might be thinking, well, we are going up. Yay, that's a great thing, right? You might say, well, right, but it's not, doesn't look like that big of a difference. However, I will tell you that what that will translate into are your M-step scores, right? Those are your benchmark assessment scores. And as a previous principal, it is really hard to move one, two, three percent. It may take a year, two years to get to that kind of growth. So this is a celebration from me, our whole executive team, and the board to all of the teachers that are out there, working day in, day out to make sure that our kids are going to be meeting benchmarks. And it's only winter, so we're really hopeful that this percentage will increase the next time we present to the board in June. The next one you'll see is Met Growth. So again, those are the national norms for growth. That's quite a night, a nice increase of about eleven percent. And then in some growth, a growth of about a little less than five percent. And then, of course, no-growth is kind of the outlier because that's the one you do want to see go down, right? So for those of you at home, we do want to see that last one decrease.
So, you know, again, there's two ways of looking at this. You say to yourself, my God, we only have sixteen percent of our students proficient. And yeah, that's not nearly enough. But then you also see a more than four percent raise from twelve to sixteen.
Hello? All right, wonderful. One of the things to also look at, and again, it's how you play with numbers, is four percent over twelve percent is one-third, it's thirty-three percent. If we continue to grow at a thirty-three percent cliff, we're going to get to a great number pretty soon. I say it both ways because when I see this slide, I say to myself, we have so much to do. We have so far to go. But also to see that even within the, you know, twenty weeks that we've been in school this year, with the new order of business, the new instructional team, the new focus on instruction, we're growing by thirty-three percent. That's something that we should be really proud of. And as Jessica said, the teachers have been going on this journey with us. We now have an instructional model that we're using. We have curriculum that we're using. We know that we have quite a lot of students, certainly schools, that are on the partnership level. We would not be on partnership if we were moving at the national norm. So the fact that we're really getting there here is an indication that we're already making huge progress on the partnership work. So I just wanted to part, point that out as well. And my hope, of course, is that that no-growth number goes from thirty all the way down to like five percent. But that, a lot of that is based on the high schoolers taking this seriously.
All right, we'll take a look now at our comparative data for math. So it's the same data that you looked at previously for reading. So again, the gray bar is the twenty-twenty-two, so last year's data at the same time in winter. And the colorful bar on the right is this year's data. So we move from proficient to Met Growth to growth and to no-growth. And here you are going to see not as much growth. We do know that our focus really has been around reading. And again, this is just a nice reminder that this is where we need to create some balance in the type of instruction and and the focus that we give. Of course, like Ben said, we've only been at this for about a semester since the focus has really been intense. And so we have lots of plans to make sure that we're moving in the right direction.
And one thing that's interesting that it's hard to see because it's on the previous slide, our proficiency level for math is lower than our proficiency level in ELA. But our Met Growth is actually higher. So our Met Growth for ELA is a forty-seven-point-nine percent. Here it's fifty-five. And our Sum Growth is seventy-three-eighty-one, and the ELA is sixty-eight-oh-three. So again, you know, we do really need to focus on math so that the proficiency level goes up. But what's interesting is that actually the meeting of the growth and the sum growth are actually higher and the no-growth is lower. Again, this is where we dig deep into the data. Let's understand why, which teachers are working, which teachers, you know, the kids are not, what classrooms the kids are not able to learn. These are the kinds of things that we look at. But again, that proficiency rate, that's the one that's going to translate to M-step scores. And that's the one that we really want to make sure is going up quite, quite a lot.
All right, the next piece that we'll be looking into is growth by grade band and by school. So we're going to do some comparison data from winter to winter by school, school by school and grade band by grade band. So by now, you're all experts in proficiency. We're going to be looking at the different grade bands here. So we have in kind of the, all the way from the left to the right, you're going from your K-three, K-four to your high schools. And then we have the district percentage on the right-hand side, which is what we just looked at in the previous slides. So again, on here, this is just reading. So the left-hand bar, that gray again, is last winter's scores. And this, and this current winter are kind of that colorful band on the right-hand side for each, each school. You take a look as we go through, we have many schools really growing in the area of proficiency already. And it's just winter. So that's a really exciting thing. Our schools really need to be proud of the work that they're doing because proficiency is really kind of the, the golden realm, if you will, to make sure that our students are on benchmark. Do you want to share anything about that?
I mean, it is what it is, right? I mean, I want to really congratulate, I mean, Forest View got eleven percent up. I mean, that's really incredible. Post Oak moved up by about ten percent. You know, you, you, you can see the numbers. One of the things I do want to really point out, and I think trustee Moore will be very happy about this point, is that the Learning Hub, which is a place that we created as an alternative education for students that were not succeeding at other places, actually has a proficiency rate of twenty-two percent, which is higher than, than all of the high schools. And so I think what that really speaks to is that when you think of learning, it doesn't always have to be the same way. When you do something different, when you really focus on the needs of the students, when you create something new with some incredible folks, you can do some great things. The number of students at the Learning Hub is much smaller, of course. It is so much, there's a lot when you have fifteen-hundred kids at a school. But I just want to point that out because I think sometimes society and even our own, our own kind of biases says, oh, alternative education, those are the kids that can't learn. Those are the kids that are not able to do it. And in fact, those kids this year have shown an ability to get to proficiency that is really quite wonderful. So I want to commend the Learning Hub for that.
All right, the next slide is math proficiency. So again, the same data that we just looked at for reading. And again, comparison data from last winter to this winter, starting with our pre-K threes and fours, all the way through high school and then a district comparison. So again, you will see how our schools fared from last winter. And again, across the board, for the majority of our schools, we're seeing quite a bit of growth, which is really impressive.
You know, and the one thing I will point out, and we'll probably get into a deeper conversation, the places that you see the lowest proficiency are our junior high schools. There's a lot of reasons for that. Again, I'm not trying to hide anything, none of us are. We have to be honest about it. And so you can see the kind of pre-K threes. You've seen some, some growth, but you also see a little bit of a higher level. Some of that has to do with the Ames Web. But, you know, when you look at our kind of junior high schools, we know we've had some staffing concerns. We know, I mean, when I report to the board every week, the number of vacancies and openings and substitute teachers. You know, what this really shows is what we all know. A great teacher in a classroom moves the needle. And so it's something that we're going to have to focus on as we move forward.
All right, so the next slide is reading Met Growth. So again, this is the one that is the requirement for ninety-eight B. That's why you will see that blue line across the middle at that eighty percent mark. That is our, our goal. And these again are our schools from left to right. You'll see, be seeing, I won't need to say that probably up this slide because they're all going to follow the same exact format. But here again, we're seeing quite a bit of growth. If we're looking at, for example, Kendon, they went up thirty points. That's pretty amazing. Rio, twenty-one to fifty-two percent. So again, that means that our teachers are really working very diligently to make sure that our kids are meeting growth and moving like others, other students across the nation. The next one is math Met Growth. So again, if we take a look at this, some of the margins of increase are a little bit smaller. But again, to Ben's point, if we take a look at the Lansing Learning Hub, their Met Growth for students is eighty-seven-point-five percent. It's the only school at this point that has met our, our district goal. And again, it's just really exciting to see that kind of progress with a school because those are students who are very bright, they're showing up, and they finally kind of found their home, right? They've found their space that they can thrive and grow. And so I'm really happy to see that we have a program like that.
And, and, and again, not to, you know, only say positive things, but also the kind of honest and unvarnished truth. If you remember, the number of proficient in Learning Hub for math was actually zero. And so what's so fascinating about that is it says, wow, eight, more than eighty percent of kids at the Learning Hub are able to make that projected growth. But what level did they come in at, right? And so again, we have to understand that all kids don't learn the same way. All kids don't learn in the same facility the right, the same way. And that the more that we as a district create options for folks, the better. You know, here, just you look at the different models we have, we have to be really thoughtful about which children are going to thrive in which places. And a lot of that is about listening to families, listening to teachers, and also listening to the children themselves so that they can articulate what they need.
All right, the next two slides, we're going to be around some growth in reading and some growth in math. I will labor the point, but you can see here again, winter to winter. And our some growth numbers, some schools are going up and some schools, they're staying around the same rate, right? So when we talk about different schools, for example, you might see a drop of, let's say, five percent. But then you have to look at how many children are actually attending that school. The same with an increase, right? Because if you have a hundred students, that's fewer kids than if you have eight-hundred students, for example. Just to note that. And here's our math some growth. And I'll just give you a minute to kind of take a look at that. And then the inverse, reading no growth. And math no growth. So again, those are things that, as principals and instructional division, we really need to be focused on to figure out what's happening and how we can create support for students and teachers to make sure that all of our students are really growing. So the last part is, we've shown you a lot of data and data is only as good as the action plan that comes with it, right? And so we've laid out kind of our plan to improve student achievement. For those of you that were on the board the last time we presented, this isn't going to look any different. And it really shouldn't because a good plan means it's something that you stick to and it is going to take some amount of time to make sure that you're seeing growth and that you're kind of planting the seeds to grow. If you keep changing things, then we really don't know what's working and we're not keeping consistency, which is really what we know for instruction works the best. So you'll see on here, we have a strengthening of tier-one instruction. That means instruction that is meant for all students on grade-level standard, grade-level benchmark. So we need to make sure that all of our students have access to grade-level curriculum and instruction. The next thing you'll see is clear and consistent model of instruction. So again, when Ben came to our district, did a nice tour of all the schools, and he came back. And I think one thing that was striking was that we, in our classrooms, we don't, we're not speaking common language when it comes to instruction. And this year, we've been very diligent about the workshop model. Our instructional team puts out a memo every week diligently at Tuesday at seven AM called the Instructional Minute. And it includes videos and pictures of our classrooms. We have amazing things happening in our district. It includes articles and it takes teachers and our principals and schools through this workshop model. And then we also, we have our entire team visiting schools, as you know, you've heard me say that before. And our, our instructional team is in schools every week to do side-by-side walkthroughs with our principals and then provide really robust feedback to our teachers, which we know is the way to really improve instruction. And then we also have training and support that we can offer. We're really lucky to have a REAP grant because we have kind of a, a big menu of things that we can provide and the money is there to support us. So we're really pleased about that. As all of you know, we've been utilizing surveys. We have our parent, our community, our staff, and our student surveys. And that helps us to make sure that we're making choices and decisions that are benefiting everyone in our school district and the surrounding community. Obviously, like tonight, we're utilizing data regularly. So this is just one snapshot of datas that schools use regularly in addition to, for example, discipline data, attendance data, course passes and failures. So there's lots of things that we can look at data-wise in our schools. And that's something that we're really trying to... And that's something that we're really trying to standardize across the district. Also, as you know, the equity audit, um, actually, when I left here tonight, I passed our equity audit, um, committee, which is really great to see them meeting on Thursdays. And, uh, equity is a really important thing that we have to keep in mind, because learning is for all students. And access to wonderful education is for all students. And so our decisions that we make every day need to impact that. And the equity audit was really a great way to show us where we have some growth that we need to make. And then we also have the quality review, which is now, I think we'll have all of our schools by the end of the school year. It's a really intensive process, and I went through it this year. Um, I was able to walk through Kavanagh alongside the quality review team. And what that does is it interviews teachers, and it interviews parents and students, and we go into classrooms. And it really gives us a model of an action plan that principals can put into place to make sure that they're providing the best education and environment possible for our kids.
Yeah, I, I really just want to highlight the quality review. All the other ones, um, I think are pretty self-explanatory. Um, but one of the ways that you move organizations, be it school districts, companies, even families, uh, the idea is you got to know what's actually happening in the thing that you care about. And what the quality review does is it brings a team of educators into a building for one and a half to two full days. And they're walking into classrooms, they're interviewing parents, they're interviewing students, they're interviewing teachers. And of course, they're talking to the principal, and they're getting real feedback. And then they triangulate that. So when the parent says, you know, we have these issues, and they hear the same thing from the kid, and they hear it from the teacher, they are able to say, wow, there's, there's an issue here, let's go focus on it. And the quality review itself has a series of rubrics that you can understand the focus, and a lot of it is based on instruction, right? We, we look at the test scores, we look at the attendance, but we also listen to the parents. We listen to the students, we listen to the teachers. And so my hope is that by the end of this year, we're going to be able to have a quality review for every one of our schools. And then we're going to use that quality review as a kind of a teaching tool and a learning process, so that we actually can then go into the schools the next year and try to work on those things. What's nice is through the quality review teams, they're both internal and external folks. They're able to coach the principals, coach the schools, to really go towards success. So, you know, I'm really proud of the work that the internal team has done, really kind of accepting this as a model, uh, because this is really going to help move this district. Uh, but you have to be in the schools, and you have to talk to parents. You got to talk to kids, you got to talk to teachers, uh, in order to get a sense of what's really going on. So, um, it's our hope that we'll be able to share some of this stuff with you guys soon, um, once we get it all formalized.
Alright, the last thing is just increasing, uh, student awareness around assessments, right? That's something we talked about especially for the high schools. And then making sure that we're providing our students with some sort of assessment preparation, so that they know how to tackle the test, and that that's not a barrier for any of our students. Because we know if they know something, but they don't know how to navigate the test, that's going to impact their scores. So that's really our plan. We're really diligent about executing this. We're trying to keep things pretty simple, because we know these are really best practices. And, um, really building the fidelity and integrity in, in outlining this for the school years to come. Now we're ready for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Body.
Hello? Ah, alright, well, thank you for that. Um, and before I ask my question, I do want to just uplift one thing. I think the thing that I was most impressed with actually in this whole thing was Kendon. Uh, because they had the lowest scores across the board last year. They were like the bottom. And not only are they no longer in the bottom, they increased like a lot. So whoever's at Kendon ought to be congratulated. I really want to like uplift them. And then, uh, one of the things that was maybe not so nice was the, um, the fact that our middle years, a lot of them have made no growth. And in fact, the no growth has maybe gone up in some instances from last year. The question that I had closer to the beginning was just interpreting, um, a data point, and it is in the K through 12 data on the slides that say, that first say met growth and followed by some growth. Uh, oh, there's no page numbers. Oh, eight, haha, eight and nine. So on page eight, the grade 12 met growth, the percentages of 48.81 and 54.84 are the same as in grade 12 for some growth, 48.81 and 54.84. And I wasn't sure how to interpret that.
I mean, if the numbers are right, which I think they are, I think the way to interpret that is that we had kids that either met the growth, uh, and that they had some growth, and then you can see that the no growth is 45%. So in fact, that's, that's kind of the deal, is that they, is that it's all met, or that they didn't do, or they didn't?
Either they met or they didn't.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, we'll, we'll parse that much more. But I, I think, and, and if anything, what's interesting, that really speaks to the point of the 12th graders, those that took it seriously, took it seriously, and those that didn't just said, forget about it. Um, which again, is, is my fear about this, and why so many, uh, schools are only looking at the K8. Um, we want to use exams as formative assessments, learning from them to move kids forward. But again, they have to be worthwhile. So I think what you're really seeing is kids either made the growth they were supposed to, or they didn't go at all, and the kids that probably didn't go at all, didn't take it seriously. So that, that's how I interpret it.
Okay. Mrs. Moore? I'm, I was just curious, could you tell me, tell us what schools are part of the quality reviews? What schools are participating in that?
So all of them are going to this year.
Oh, they're going to?
But we're just, uh, doing it piece by piece.
Okay, so you don't have any schools that are actually participating, involved in it now?
Oh, no, no, so some schools have already had their quality review.
Okay.
And then we're trying to, I can't remember, and I can give you the schedule. Um, but about, uh, eight or 10 schools have gone through the quality review already this year. And then the rest of the schools are doing it, uh, in the winter, in the spring, and going through it, yeah. The, uh, the, the outside folks, uh, can only spend about a week per time they come here. So they can hit about five to six schools, yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Um, I want to make an observation, because we do have 13, uh, schools that's, 13 failing schools in Lansing per se. And all of them have made an increase, within the exception of Lyons. Lyons decreased. Uh, Kudos to Rio, they increased both 10% in reading and in math almost. Um, so with those schools, and they were all more than, these were all on the proficient level. So they all increased drastically, or had some type of increasing, and they're on the failing list. So we should be proud of that, that those 13 schools have had some growth, and they're very proficient at this point. And if you don't know what those schools are, they were according to the Atwood Capital Area K-12 Online, which I think is a learning hub, Eastern Everett, Avril, Gardner, Guyer Park, Saxon, Lyons, Mount Hope, North, Rio, and Wexford. So to all of you that are in the schools, congratulations.
Uh, thank you for saying that. I, I really, I, I think that's, that's really wonderful. Um, you know, I think what we're seeing is the district is moving. And, you know, I think that what you see with this data is that there's a long way to go. Um, but, you know, even that move from 12% to 16% on proficiency, that 4% difference for an NWA score, uh, for an M-step score, actually is going to take some schools out of that list. So we're getting there. Um, but again, we always have to hold ourselves accountable to doing as best as we can for students.
Ms. Lilie? Thank you. I really appreciate all of this. Um, thank you so much for the transparency, the clarity, the context, all of it. This is really great work. I feel like I have a chance to understand, to understand what's going on. Um, so my questions, first I have one from page eight, well, actually, two questions from page eight. So I just, you've said that the, the met growth and the some growth should continue to increase as the year progresses? Okay, so then when we see this, um, at the end, will we see this at the end of the year? And we'll be having comparative data from that time last year? Okay, but the numbers hopefully will go up in, in the right ways and down in the, in the right way. Um, then what is the, this might be too simple of a question with too complex of an answer, but what is the met growth? Is it one year of growth? Is it 1.25 years of growth? Is it, what, how do you, what is that?
So how NDBA works is, um, I'll, I'll give an example. So I might be a second grader, and my RIT score, that's what they call the score, is, um, let's say I come in and I have a, I met a 15. So what the NWA score does is, because they have years and years and years and years of data, is they say, okay, so we have, let's take all of our third graders in the past that have come in at that 15. How much growth should they make, or have they made in the past? And they'll say, oh, okay, a student that comes in at 15, they, they make about 10 points of growth. It's at, they're at 25. But proficiency might be 40, proficiency might be 20. It depends on the grade level, right? So met growth, really, that's where the adaptive part comes in, because it really looks at student by student. And then it compares them to students across the nation that have typically scored that amount.
Okay, so when we're trying to make that target about what is met growth, it's how they, that target comes from a comparison to a national average.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Um, then my next question is from page 15. And I just had a question about where do the K through eight schools' data go? You know, we've got the middle years here, but then I know that at Post Oak, there are middle school kids there. So.
True. Yeah, so, so i- it's all there, right? So if you, if you just take a?
Go back to the grade band?
Yeah, so if you look on page 15, you know, you've got Patengill, let's say. That's a K7 now, and it'll be a K8 next year. Um, that's all of their schools combined, all their grades combined. Uh, and so if you notice that kind of, I don't know what color that is, darker or something or another. So where it says academies, that's your K8s, your K7s, and it's just everybody put together.
Okay, so if I wanted to really look at the grade level variations, I'd go to the grade band page?
Exactly.
Okay.
And honestly, in this, you know, we can make it, uh, for the board, and we can make it public. If you really want to look at specific schools, you know, we can try to get you that data too. But if you want to look at grade band, it's that first, the first, and then if you want to look at schools, it's here.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, a couple of questions. So thinking about the fact that, uh, proficiency and growth are set by national standard, right? So we don't necessarily have any control or access to an equity assessment on how equitable that, that standard is, right? So we're being compared to, not necessarily, we could be compared to whole harmless districts, plus affluent districts, whatever. So, um, that being said, that also, i- i- I'm asking the question, that also means the needle could move, right? So this year, the definition of, uh, grade level proficiency means you're reading and writing in Latin, and next year it could change. Is that possible, or how frequently or infrequently do the national standards change?
I think we'll tag in this.
Okay, so two things. One is that, um, they're absolutely accurate. So for NWA, for example, there are studies called linking studies. And what they do is they, most of the states have linking studies, but not all of them. Michigan does have one. So what a linking study does is it takes a look at our M-step, our standardized tests, and measures it against NWA.
Okay.
In Michigan, what that means is you have to be at the 61st percentile to be considered proficient. In some states, it could be 40%. So it really depends on our state standards and what Michigan has deemed as proficient. So the number that we use is our kind of cut score for proficiency, 61. Um, other states, though, it could be less, right? And so that part, um,
Got it.
That part is standardized just for Michigan.
Got it. Okay.
Not to add to this, because I can really dork out, but one of the really interesting things that I think we're going to see probably in a year or two is that all of this is national normed, and all of this is based on years and years of data. When we start to see the COVID effect, will be really interesting. Because you're going to start to then create your national norms based on data from last year, based on data from the year before. It hasn't all necessarily been like jumbled up. Um, but one of the things that will be really interesting, uh, for this country is to see how that impacted different places. But for us, what's been really great is they tend to stay about the same. And so how our kids are doing now, even though the test scores change and things change, we've seen a pretty standard answer for like 25, 30 years. So if we move proficiency here, next year, it's going to be kind of the same thing.
Sure. And, and I don't want to sugarcoat or make excuses. I mean, our, our proficiency numbers are lower than what we would want to see if proficiency is defined as meeting or exceeding grade level expectation. I, I, I do just think it's worth mentioning that it would be interesting to see the data comparatively about race performance, because I think it's worth the question of engaging around the conversation of, if we're cutting a score saying that this is the standard, and it's disproportionately skewing that BIPOC populations are not meeting the standard, then I have questions. Throwing that out there. That's not something we can fix today. So let me ask a question that maybe we can't answer today. So the, once a student meets proficient, they're only counted in proficient. So they're not also counted in growth, but, because a student could meet growth and be proficient. So are our kids potentially counted twice?
Yes.
Okay.
So in this, um, if you were to add these up, the only two that will add to 100% are your some growth and no growth.
Okay.
But if I'm proficient, um, I actually might not even be in met growth.
Correct.
Maybe I didn't make the growth, but yet, like, I might be a really stellar student. I come in, I'm proficient, but I'm not growing.
Right.
So that's why met growth is really important to us, because we're not only growing students that are low grade level or at grade level, we should be growing students that are also above grade level.
Okay, perfect, that's what I was asking.
So there are duplicates across.
I didn't want us to lose track of the proficient kids. Um, just because they're proficient, they should still meet growth over year over year. Okay, perfect. And then to that, where I was going, that I would, I know, like you said, you could, could have made us 100 slides and dug into more data. I'd be, I'd be curious, especially because one of our improvement plans is around creating a consistent model of instruction. We're doing this workshop model, we've talked a lot about sequencing and pacing guides. If we have any data around students, district, schools who received a lot of intra-district transfers, right? So I'm curious about, when we talk about comparing instruction models and finding any, finding any opportunities there, because I'd be really curious to see if we're, if the timing of when kids transfer. Okay, so let me ask it this way. If you could find the data that tells us, you know, this, these, this, this school tested kids that started and ended in this school, as opposed to this school taught kids who moved around? Because I'm also wondering if that kind of moves the score, like, for example, that Kendon inherited a bunch of kids? Or was that straight their kids that they grew across the district? I mean, across the year, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, you're thinking like a, like a researcher, you know, like, I love it. I, you know, I, what's interesting is, you know, when I got here, a lot of, of folks said that there's a lot of, uh, district transfers, a lot of kids going back and forth. Turns out that's not actually true, uh, is that that number's pretty low. Um, but I think what, but we can still look for it, right? And, and I think that's a really great thing, and we do come back, uh, in June to present, uh, ours, and we could think about that. The other interesting way of looking at it too is, uh, this year, and I, I'll turn to Sergio, but I think we've had over 125, 140 folks just come into the district, uh, as, uh, as, as new folks into the district. It'd be really interesting to see how, you know, where they came in on proficiency level and then growth level, right? I mean, you know, we've had a huge influx of Afghani, uh, families. You know, what, did they have formal schooling where they came to us, did they not? Were they coming with, because there's a lot of questions there. And I think that will really show, uh, what I'm, what we're very proud of in this district is the amount of growth that we're showing with kids that maybe- is the amount of growth that we're showing with kids that maybe come to us with low levels, but are actually able to grow. And one thing that I know, Jessica, I heard her smile, is, one thing that I'll turn the mic over to her to say is, we actually are showing some really wonderful growth with our ENL, English as a New Language folks, as well as our newcomer folks, because of certain schools that have shown growth. But I'm going to let Jessica talk about that, because I know she wants to.
I don't know why I'd want to talk about that. Yeah, the, as many of you know, the ELL programs are really kind of near and dear to my heart, especially having been a principal at Sheridan Road. And when we think about equity and we think about learning, what I think I'm, I'm very proud of, and I think the entire district should be, is if we were to show this data to someone who did not know our schools or our populations, I don't know that you would know to point out one school or another based on the populations that they serve. And so that tells me that we really are meeting students where they are, and we are making sure that we're offering equitable opportunities for learning for all of our students. And so when I look at that, and I know just because I haven't been in the district, of course, we have Cumberland, Sheridan Road, Gardner. Those are very large ELL populations. But I'm not sure, looking at their data, that you would point out and say, oh, these were students that their first language was not English. So those schools really have done an exceptional job, along with our ripple deputy superintendent and all of the wonderful team that he works with, to make sure that all of our students get what they need.
Let him. Thank you. You said, Superintendent, that the, some students really don't really care about this test, right? So that also skews the averages. If they don't try, and if they, they don't try, it's going to be low and so on and so forth. So I'm thinking that, and you mentioned there's, there's a push to have interviews with staff, students, and parents. I think we need to do a, do a, a, an activity that, that works with parents, not just interview them, but tell them how important this is. And if their students do not apply themselves, you know, it keeps the district, you know, I mean, the discourse to not reflect maybe the, the actual, you know, reality of the district. Also, if, if this tests are not going to mean anything to them, but is a test material comparable to the M test, M-Step, or whatever, the Michigan test? Is it, is it comfortable, or is it, it would help students? So why don't we do something about that? This is, this will help you in, in the coming years when you take this state test. And put some effort and emphasis on, on this testing. Because, I mean, the other issue is, we talked about, not so much, not so much now, but at some point, we were testing kids every day. One test here, one test there. And, you know, that they, they get tested, you know, over, over those. So why, why do we not do something to inform the public, particularly the parents, you know, get to them, that this is important stuff? And, and then you can just look at statistics in different ways, like you said, you know? This is this, but we know that some kids don't, don't care about a test. So, I mean, it's, it's not only that, but I think we need to emphasize the fact that this do mean something, and that they will help them achieve the goals, theirs and the school's goals.
Yeah. I really appreciate you saying that. I think, you know, there's, there's two important pieces. One is, we as a district need to do a better job informing everybody, parents, students, the community, that these are really important, and they're important because of state's tests. But it's also important because the more accurate the information is, the better the teachers can actually move the kids. And then the second piece, which I think is also important, is we have to make the tests actually meaningful, right? Is, I appreciate that if I was a 17-year-old kid, if this didn't mean anything to me, why should I care? And I think the more, and this was a conversation actually Jessica and I were having today, is let's figure out ways to make this be meaningful for our students, so that it is, is worth their time, right? And so I agree with you 100%. I think the communications about, you know, when it is, getting ready. We as a community, we could say, hey, it's this week, like, it's time, you know, we could have posters, we could have, you know, emails. We could, we could get people psyched up for it. And we also, on a school level, need to say, this is important, and let's take it seriously. So I really appreciate you saying that.
Well, and then my next thing was going to be, what about the school level? I mean, we say this here in the administrative team, on this board, but how does it get down to the ground level, to the, to the building level? And are the principals and staff understanding what we're trying to do? And are they getting, you know, professional development if need be? So, I mean, it, it comes top-down, but does it ever get down?
Right, right, right.
And then what is the, you know, down-up information that we need? So, go ahead.
So to answer your question, yes, it's really important. In fact, the principals and teachers have done analysis for about the last month on this, prior to us even coming to the board. So at the administrative meeting, we spent about two hours looking at their NWA data. The ISD came out and did a presentation that's, I think, their second or third this school year. And then on our DPPD day, or our district provided professional development days, the one that we had in the fall, and then also the one now, we strategically placed those, so that staff could take their NWA AIMS Web data and then create action plans and take it apart to look at, how are my students performing? Are my, how are your students performing? Oh, what strategies are you using? What do I need to do? So the data is really important to us to be transparent to the public and the board, but it's more important for the teacher to know at that level exactly what their students are doing. The data is really important to our teachers, and that's why we need to have students take, take it seriously. Because if the data's not accurate, then the teachers might be acting on information that's not as accurate as they would have liked. But most teachers know their students, and so they know, oh, yeah, he's, he's performing way higher than this. We need to figure out what, what we need to do for next time. But I appreciate that, because the teacher level is really where this data needs to be put into action.
So then, then my last question is, what resources does a teacher have in the classroom to deal with students who are not proficient, not making, you know, progress, and so on and so forth? So what is, you know, the, the support of teachers and staff in the buildings?
So we are working on multi-tiered systems of support, which we do not have fully developed yet. Just in all transparency, it's something that we're working on as instructional team. We really did start with lower, lower L, or early literacy, to build the structures in place to know. Because again, with Tier One, it's all about what the teacher's doing with the students. That's the most important work. And we're trying to build their toolbox. But right now, I would say that we have some teachers that are very well-equipped to do this on their own, either from professional development training that they've been to, or things that their principals have offered. But we also have teachers that are still starting out with this process, and it's something that we need to build. So I would say we're at the beginning stages of that.
Yeah, and, you know, in terms of resources, everything from the professional development to the creation of the new instructional division, to the single points of contacts, who are the heads of the different divisions, to the school visits, there's, there's a lot of, of resources. I mean, certain schools will have literacy coaches, they'll have, I mean, there's a ton, but I think the point is, we still have to do more, right? Is that we as a district need to figure out, how can we give more support to our teachers, so that they can give support to our students? And, you know, Jessica and her team are really taking that. There are quite a lot of resources already today, but we need to, in some respects, take what we have, codify it, get a real vision together, so that it's helping all, and then looking at this data and saying, ah, what does Lyons need? What does Riddle need? What does Mount Hope need? So it's a great point. Thank you.
Just going to share that. Thank you for your transparency about the multi-tier support that you're working on. But I do want to point out that we, as a board, we're also assigned to schools. And I think that we need to also do our part in, in supporting our district, encouraging our students. I have an 11th grader, and I can't wait to go home and tell her, tell your friends to take the test seriously, if they're not already doing so. But I think it's very important that we support each other. So as we go into the schools, let us encourage our teachers and our principals and our students, hey, we want you to excel. So please, especially in high school, because when I look at the test scores, and our 12th graders, they're about to graduate. And are they prepared? So we have to do our best to make sure that the generation, well, not the generation, but the class that's coming up behind them are prepared. So I just wanted to share that. So I have a couple of questions, and then I have a thought. How many various tests do we take throughout the year? I know we do the NWA, I know we do the M-Step, I know some of the students do the PSAT. Keep going.
Okay. District Y, we do AIMS Web and NWA three times a year, fall, winter, spring. And then we have our WEDA assessment, and that's for our English language learners, which they may or may not take the M-Step, depending on if they're a newcomer or not. We also have, let me think here, PSAT, SAT, ACT. And then AP tests, if they opt in. Or IB.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a little, gonna date myself here, so don't, don't be mad. Whatever happened to the NEAT test, or is that the replacement of the M-Step?
Yes, M-Step is just the updated.
Okay, okay. So I'm still dating myself. I remember going into test preparation season, we had actual, and it made students accountable. We had visuals where we're starting, and then what the goal is. And in the classrooms, each, each classroom or each grade level had, that makes the student accountable. It's almost like, we have to remember, education can be fun, and I think we're so data-driven that we've taken the fun out of it. Seeing it, me seeing this today, I'm going to go home and talk to my son, even though I know how he performs on these tests. But it's, what do you need to see from me? Is there incentives that we could? School-to-school challenge, in-school challenges, it's going to create, where the parents are involved. Once they see it, I mean, we're seeing this, and we're like, what can we do? I think a lot of times, it's just making the data visual. I'm walking into the school and saying, okay, they did that on the NWEA for this time period. What do we need to do now? Because that allows us to see the goals. That allows us as parents, as teachers, it's everybody to say, okay, this is my school. How can I make my school, I think I have Mount Hope. How can I make Mount Hope excel better? I'm going to go in and spend more time reading and math, having fun with them, letting them say, hey, okay, yes, we have to read this, but let's, what, what can I do to make it easier for you? I think that's the core to all of this. We're so, we forgot that learning can be fun. Visually seeing these things, I'm like, I would like to see a bloom grow up every now and then, you know? Because then these people can say, hey, we're doing it, we're doing it, we're doing it. And it's, I think if we can make this data in the buildings, because a lot of times, yes, we give this in the mails, emails, and everything else, but I, I'm going to be honest, too many emails, too many texts, too many newsletters, I'm drained. I want to see it when I go in the building, and how it's actually working in that building versus overall. Because if that's my building, as a person, I can help that building, and then go home and say, okay, what else can we do? Bring it back as a conversation piece.
So one of the things that you will see in probably all of our schools are attendants. And that's something that we did start with last year, so our schools have attendance goals. They post their daily attendance rate, weekly, monthly, and, but I'm with you. We used to have the little thermometers in the classrooms with the goals. And actually, if you walk through Gardner, they have those.
Yeah.
That's the school that I've, I've seen, seen those posted over the last couple of weeks. But I, I agree with you. Those, those mini, even mini celebrations, so if you can set kind of like the, all right, how did we do? How did we make it? What's happening? It's important to celebrate even the small wins, because we know that the small wins will add up to, to big success. So thank you for that input. I think we've started that with attendance, but it will be great to move on now to some of our test scores.
The 13 schools that we talked about on this, we need to be celebrating them. They all had wins, with the exception of one. That's something that we should actually be in the district, in the school saying, hey, you know, while they said this, you guys have shown that you can do this. Let's keep going.
It'd be great encouragement.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments for our, or questions for our presenters this evening? All right, Tina, thank you. I really appreciate it. Appreciate you guys giving us this depth of, of information. Superintendent, I'm not going to ask you to move, because all we have next is just to.
You don't want to say next to me.
Yeah. One thing before we, we move for the board to note, and so that we can change this publication, the superintendent is going to be out of town next week, and so he has asked if we could kindly move the meeting on the 16th to the 23rd. Yeah, that's okay. So.
I was going to say, just so you know, I will be with 3,000 other superintendents. It's the AASA Conference, which is the National Superintendents Conference. So I beg your indulgence, because I always want to be here with you. So not canceling, just moving it from one week to the next, if that's okay.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say he was out of town, like, sipping my, on vacation, but it was, it was. Okay. All right, so seeing no objection to that, I don't, we don't want to cancel, but we just want to move it, so they'll allow the superintendent to be with us. We'll make sure we make a note of that to move the meeting from 16th to 23rd. And with no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Willge. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Wonderful. At 7:33, we are adjourned.